Welcome to Santa Barbara Talks with Josh Molina. Today is a very special day because I have the opportunity to talk to a real class act, a real legend of Santa Barbara, an icon of civic service and public service and somebody who I have enjoyed covering as a journalist for for many years and somebody who I I miss today when I'm writing stories because I'd love to have his his wisdom, you know, quoted in in what I do and what I report. I'm here with Harwood Bendy White, who is really doesn't really need that long introduction because he's given so much to this community. And today I'm honored to have an hour of your time. Bendy, how are you doing?
Well, I'm fine and Josh and I'm delighted to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. I miss you at City Hall. I miss hearing your quotes and your your wise words and your big picture analysis. And that's why I'm looking forward to today. I want to talk to you about State Street, downtown, outdoor dining, park lets, also housing, state pressures with housing, the news press, we'll talk about you, the council, we'll get there. Okay. But first I just want to ask you, Bendy. Right now, the city is really focused on a couple of things, the State Street master plan, the long term use for State Street, and then, of course, we have the interim solutions that people are talking about. You spoke at a meeting recently, very eloquently, and I kind of want to start there. Bendy, what is your take on what is going on downtown with the closure? No cars, nine blocks, and we've got lots of opinions. Some people say no cars, pedestrians, bikes, outdoor dining, this is the future. And then there's others, including the mayor, who says, huh, we need to think of retail, we can't just plan for one sector of the economy. And so there's a lot there. Bendy, you have the floor. What's your take? What should Santa Barbara do to solve this problem?
Well, yeah, we start with the easy stuff, huh, Josh? Yeah, it obviously State Street is is a shell of its of the self that we expected, we've had it be in the past and that folks have been envisioning. Really, you can go back into the late 50s when landowners and merchants got together with city government to to start planning the plaza as or as Bill Mahan calls it, the plaza. And it's gone through incremental stages of of upgrade and development and and obviously we've hit hit a real rut here. And it I I think the storm perfects itself a little bit around the around housing. And of course, the the death of sticks and bricks retail. So what we see on the ground is a symptom and it's a systemic systemic problem, not just the 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 debate that's going on with the State Street Advisory Committee and with with city politics. You really, there's, in my view, there's help needed at every level. And I'm not, I have not heard help. We the help that's coming from Sacramento, for example, in the form of of mandatory development, the top down stuff. A bunch of it's aggravating and a bunch and and yet we have to look at one piece that is actually working. I know I'm wandering from State Street really quickly, but in my view, the the key to State Street 2040, 2030, 2040 is a very strong mix of residential. I mean, no surprise to anybody, a strong mix of residential with, I mean, I I, for example, had envisioned when Macy's died, Nordstrom died, that one or two, one or another of those spaces could be incubation type spaces, office spaces where small businesses could could flourish out of the UCSB sort of higher income businesses, but that those could be accommodated, of course, with people living nearby to 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 staff those those businesses. So that that in a in broad brush is a is a sense of what I would, I hope that State Street becomes. How do we get there? We do see a couple of, we see projects of opportunity that have come in. Peter Lewis's project on the on the South End. And there's, there's a couple of bigger projects on Guecheras and Chapala, too. So they've gotten close to State Street. We don't have a, we really don't have yet a residential project occurring on state. And that's, that's too bad. How do we? How do we crack that safe, that strong box? Of course, I don't know because it's just going to take, it definitely takes the the will of the of of landowners. And this is what the the folks in the 50s and 60s were really attentive to was at the table needs to be the landowners and the and the so called merchants. I mean, those, the stakeholders that are left that we're trying to, of course, sustain best we can. They need to be at the table. To the I I hit a couple of ideas that I have for nurturing this transformation. But meantime, we have, I'm gonna lose my train of thought here. On, so we have residential on State Street. We're trying to get tools to make that happen. What could they be? Peter Lewis complained about about the difficulty in transforming commercial space to residential. That, of course, we need to bend those rules every way we can to to allow the reuse where we're at all possible. Here's a big piece that you, with your institutional memory, can appreciate. I believe that the corridor roughly from the eastern half of Anacapa Street to the western half of of Chapala Street needs to go five stories. And that's a real change. I was one of the folks that was behind the four story limit of 10 years ago, or whenever that was that that effort occurred. I, we do need a little more, we, the small, Santa Barbara, small town feel. Well, let's look at small towns. Let's look at Santa Barbara as a small town in the 20s when we had the Granada, the Balboa Building, the Correo Hotel, which then became the Canary. Those were all, of course, six story buildings. Small town America of the 1920s went up five and six stories because it's because folks could walk. It makes for a walkable, a railroad based walkable community. So that's, that's a real change of that, probably the most substantial change of view that I have had in the last 15, 20 years of of studying this activity. All right, let's look at, let's look at a couple of ideas and and it's really to sort of go, what if, to a broader picture. How can we get encouraged, entice a a landowner to put up the, shall we say, three million dollars, four million dollars, that's for the development of residential in that area? Could we, certainly the city could go with a expedite first, particularly first in, the the folks that are willing to step up first ought to get preferential treatment to, in in terms of permit, both timing and cost. Could the state not help out? And I'll get to this even with ADUs, which we'll talk about momentarily. Could the state not provide property tax exemptions for these early in? I mean, the situation can't be the, Santa Barbara cannot be the only downtown that's experiencing this problem. But to be to be giving, to providing incentives at the state level such as that, I think are 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 warranted. As far as the the nuts and bolts that we are hearing now, that the council's debating over whether to have any vehicular access on State Street or not. I lean toward the the Cass Ensberg approach. I thought that was a good compromise. My views were definitely swayed by my trip to Paris last summer. And I was on, I, we stayed on a place called Roucler, C L E R, which cars are allowed, just barely. They are tolerated. And they creep in and they drop off their passenger. There, of course, there's always going to be the freight handling that goes on between, you know, at dark 30 for the flowers and the food and such. But it it showed me that if we, that it's possible for vehicles to be tolerated and and to have a smaller proverbial footprint, tire print, whatever you want to call it. So and always, what we do have before us is flexibility. We're doing something and is it working or not? How can we tweak it, staying, keeping our knees bent on all of this? I'm sure everybody is doing it out of self defense, but it definitely to just have flexibility being part of the of the package is essential. So toler, as I say, Cass, I think, came up with some good ideas for a a compromise on having vehicles being tolerated in most of that nine block corridor. Yeah, I want to, Josh, I want to have one last bit on that. And that is what is missing is a sort of a unity of purpose. And I think that there are a variety of options that could work, but that definitely council needs to have that sort of sense of, okay, we're in it, we're in it for a pound, we're going for a package here and we're intent upon it. And we, of course, are seeing a sort of a more of a sense of, we're not sure. And that unsureness filters down to, again, what what we really need is that is is the the lighting up like we saw in the funk zone where we we hit a tipping point and we we done enough things right that then the next half billion dollars came in after the city's 100 million, 75 million, whatever was spent to sort of set the stage. And the funk zone, the the private sector was able to take advantage of of all the wonderful piece, separate pieces and pull it into a functioning system.
I I really enjoy listening to you because you have so much scope and history and knowledge. You know, you spent two terms on the city council, many on the planning commission. I don't even know how many on the planning commission, but of course, the water commission and so and others, of course, and you have that history, that context. I think one of the challenges of any leader who is trying to figure things out is they may not go back enough in time in history to understand how we got here. And there's almost a bias toward history, like there's almost a, well, that was the old way. There was problems with those people who made those decisions and therefore we can't keep doing that. But it's, it's so enlightening. I mean, you talk about what is the Canary now, right? And you talk about these buildings, 1920 Santa Barbara. And of course, it was small town charm back then. And you've grown yourself, right, wanting to see maybe five stories there on Anacapa and Chapala sides. And so that's just, just a really good information that is, that is wise and that offers that that context. Bendy, I'm going to put you on the spot here on bicycles. You go downtown, let me ask you that. You go downtown, you eat downtown, 500 block. What about these electric vehicles? That there seems to be a lot of time spent on this issue as it relates to Santa Barbara's future and downtown. Should we have motorized pedal assisted bikes downtown as part of this mix? Or do we say, hey, no bike riding on State Street for these X amount of blocks?
Well, clearly, the the bikes are one of the more substantial downsides to what's going on there now. It's it's uncomfortable. So that's got to stop. And again, we're reading about it in the in 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 the press all over. It's, it's a, it's, it's something that's sweeping the country and clearly we get to see why. They're just, they're dangerous. And whether they belong in vehicular what in vehicular paths, not in, not where I'm walking from Arigato to the Granada. You know, that's just, that is, that's really diminishing the quality of that and and just making it dangerous and uncomfortable. And people are already, we're needing to seduce people back downtown. And that's not doing it.
Yeah, definitely, definitely not. And many responsible bike owners, of course, and we can all get along, but not everybody. And and also just accidents happen unintentionally when you put a lot of different mixes downtown. You mentioned, I think you said, ADUs when you were talking about that housing mix. So we know about the state demands and we know about these numbers that all of these jurisdictions have to meet in order to plan for for housing. How is Santa Barbara doing from your perspective? We've got that Lacoumbre Plaza site, which is envisioned to have lots of units, 1500, something like that. We have the AUD program where we're seeing these small lots get very dense. But of course, that's market rate, except for the inclusionary. So that raises that whole debate of, well, who are we building housing for? It's certainly not the people who need it the most. But then we also have it easier for people to build accessory dwelling units in their homes. So can you talk a little bit about ADUs and, you know, how that can help Santa Barbara solve a little bit of its housing crisis? And when we talk about market rate housing, right? Do we need more market rate housing, Bendy? Or do we need housing for the service community? That's, that's, that's who might need it more than others.
Well, yes, we need clearly the service, what you say of the service community. I've had the, unfortunately, our, our, our little family has had to experience some medical concerns in the last six months. And when you talk about, and I, what, I may be retired, but the poor folks that run into me all get queried with, after I have, you know, either blood has been drawn or whatever service has been provided. I asked, well, now are you able to live here? And so many of the, the answer, and not just with the the folks sweeping the floor, but with the folks who are doing the professional work are are not able to live here. And it's, it's, it's wrong. It's it's plain wrong. And it it really, it's not fair. And so, and perhaps in addition to five stories, I've become more supportive of getting that housing in place that regular folks can use. The eight, you, you, I'm going to start with AUD and then go to ADU because AUD, AUD, first of all, was a, was one of the, I'd say, five, one of the five projects that I worked on that I that I feel good about. I mean, I feel good about a lot of others, but there is a top fiver because it was so ironic that Frank Hotchkiss and Dale Francisco and I were the subcommittee that took on AUD that was, that basically had locked up Plan Santa Barbara. We'd spent nine years plus on on getting the a general plan for the whole city done. And AUD was the sticking point. And we, two, the the two, two arch conservatives and the conservative liberal managed to come up with that package. And it clearly meets a need. You go back 12 years and rents were just not that out of line. It really has been an explosion in 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 affordability in that kind of timeframe. So we did not see the this lack of affordability hitting market rate units so hard. We saw it in the for sale side of things. And maybe, but in any case, we didn't see it. I believe, Josh, that there's a lot more that can be done in the inclusionary side of it, such that you are allowing it to be market rate, but you're, you're making it more expensive for the developer to do so. I I think that I'm not such a fan of mixing in, shall we say, well, anyway, in the in the most upscale parts of town, putting in, you know, an affordable unit in the midst of these very, very high end units. And certainly, when it comes to condos, I feel like that's not as useful as hitting the developer harder with with dollar fees and building projects that are for regular folks. We have, the Housing Authority has done a good job, and I think that their role should be re expanded to have particularly middle income, excuse me, affordable units. So I I think that AUD is a success. I I think it's, it is producing and that the city ought to go back to the drawing boards to in increase its inclusionary fees so that it's getting fair value there. And that's just one of the places where more funding is needed on for the city, local government in general is at the end of the daisy chain and gets starved out and yet ends up taking most of the flack and taking most of the symptoms. So this would be just one more place that where there's, there's funding potential. There are a couple of others as well that come to mind. But I don't think you go back to the voters either until you get state, they've got State Street as their Rubik's Cube right now. And they're going to need to get that figured out first before that you're going to have public support for another bold action, which was like what we did with Measure C, where we we sort of built a base of support there. And when when we came forward with a proposal, people believed that we met it and that it was going to, that good, good things would happen from it. And I think that that is the case with Measure C, which is, of course, the infrastructure investment program.
So let me, let me transition a little bit.
Sorry, now you said ADU. Now I can get back to the ADU, which because ADU is an exception to my rule, which is the state is doing terrible things to us. This, but ADU would not have happened if the state had not mandated it. I, as a, as a, both as a planning commissioner and as a council member, I saw how ouchy that topic was. We had a, we had a granny flat ordinance on the books for 25 years. And in, and in 23 of those years, we developed something like 10 units. It just, it was a complete bust. And now the ADU program that is state required is a very successful addition to our, I'll call it small A affordable stock, housing, affordable housing stock. You were, you were alluding to the need for, you know, people, service people, or, I mean, you can go to students. You can go to any manner of of demographic and and that that housing will be useful there. The ADU. So I'm a big fan. It contradicts my resentment for this top down stuff that the state is is doing. But I I don't think we'd get there unless the state had shoved it down our throats.
Yes. And and then you're always a big neighborhood preservation activist, too. Do you have any thoughts on? Of course, when you, when you have ADUs and neighborhoods, you have parking issues, of course, and all of that. Do we just have to to live with that because the greater good is is more units for people?
Yes. Short answer is yes. Again, if you go to I, both, both, I've just spent a little bit of time around both Cottage and Sansom. And it's, it's just criminal that those folks are are driving an hour each way to come and and take care of us. And obviously, that spreads to all the landscape folks and and on and on and on. It's just, we've we missed a boat in there of in in our preservationist policies of not keeping it balanced. And I think we could have done better. I'd use the Canary Hotel as an example. We kicked, you know, 110 people of very modest means out for that hotel. And I think the the offset was, you know, 10 units or something like that. It was, it was a an offset that was totally inadequate.
Yeah. So that was the the SROs, right? Back then, the the people who lived in that hotel were people who formerly homeless or very, very low income individuals who were, who were essentially put out and some of them relocated. And we had that big hole in the ground for a whole number of years until the hotel was built. For sure, you know, a little bit of that, that history. Bendy, I want to ask you about politics a little bit. You spent a lot of time on the council and you know what the council is doing. I'm assuming you watch the meetings, you're connected with them. How are they working as a group? We see district elections as one of the big things that has sort of affected how policy is made. What is your view on on how the council is is working together? And then I'll try not to leave you too much, but like district elections, is it a good thing so far?
I'm not a fan of district elections, Josh. I think that we miss out on some of the better people of not having, I think that there are some very good people that missed their opportunity to be on council as a result. That tradition, Santa Barbara tradition has been that you spend some time on one of the lower commissions, on on water, on on planning, on on various other parks in Iraq. And it gives you a feel for how the city works. And it certainly, and it gives you a sense of what the city's about. And I, the the district elections so far anyway, have have and it is new. So or at least it's renewed because it used, Santa Barbara used to have district elections back in the day. But people don't work their way up so much anymore, it seems, that they they happen to live in the right spot and they they are inspired to to move forward. And I I don't follow the council nearly as much as as probably I should. I, and I know that each group, you know, we we have succeeding. I, and I know that each group, you know, we, we have succeeding generations. You know, I followed sort of Marty Bloom and, and before that Sheila Lodge and, and just each generation has, has their task to take on. So, and I sure as heck, I, I feel partially informed. I know that the decisions they're making result from a lot of study and a lot of discussion, to which I'm not privy. It, it really is, you, you, you get a, a whole head full when you're actually sitting, you know, you're working with the city administrator and you're, you're sitting with each other and trying to hash something out. So I'm, I'm not as helpful on, okay, how are they doing? I, State Street is clearly the, the, the symptom now that they really, I hope that they find a way to come together on, because I think of the, there are no easy answers and they need to keep flexible. And if they can get behind something and, and give it a push, I think that's, that's helpful. And I also, as I mentioned, I hope that they'll reach up to, we have Greg Hart in state government now and Monique Limon. We have two wonderful, smart advocates there. Can we get some, a little better effort from the state? To say nothing of, you know, the elephant, the elephant in the state, which is Proposition 13. Lord help us.
A lot of talk the last couple of weeks about the demise of the Santa Barbara news press. You obviously grew up with that paper and you've, you've been close with that paper for a number of years. Not so much lately, probably. What does it mean to you, you know, to know now finally it's, it's gone? That, that local institution is no more.
It's, 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 is it the, it might be the largest blow of, of all the things that we're sitting here talking about. It, it might be the single largest blow that has hit this region in, in, in my adult life. It's what, how I started my political activism was taking a piece down to the news press and trying to get it published. And it was like, you know, going to the cathedral. It was, it was with Bob, Bob Solan was, was the reporter that I happened to know. And so it was, but it was, it was definitely an experience of hallowed ground and, and certainly just, as you say, part of, certainly part of my, my everyday life up into my, into my twenties. So it's, it is a tragic, tragic loss. And I was, I was thinking, well, what could have, would have happened that could be different? I know that the New York Times sold that paper to, I, I know, I believe the New York Times sold that paper to Wendy McCaw. And maybe, maybe they could have looked around for a responsible party. And of course, there was one waiting who had more chops in the, in the publishing world. And that it might have taken, I mean, it could not have taken a worse path than it did. And it's just a, a true heartbreak.
Yeah, definitely is.
You spent, you spent some years that your early years were at the news press, were they not?
Yeah, I, I worked there from 99 to 2006 and it was such a impressive establishment and institution. You were, when you walked into the room, you were surrounded by really good journalists. Some of them who had worked for the New York Times or New York Times regional newspapers. And it was the place to be. It was the definitive record of the day of everything that was happening in the community. And it had respect and, and it was just, it's sad, you know? It's just like, I'll never walk into that building again. But I spent a good amount of my days hammering out stories that you know and working with multiple editors and it's, you know, that becomes your life, journalism. It's not a, it's not a job you leave when you walk out. It's, it's with you 24/7. It's very unfortunate what, what has happened. Of course, we have other news outlets now, you know, Clinton News Hawk where I work, which does a good job too. Bendy, I want to talk to you a little bit about you and what you've been doing since you've left the city council. I was talking to my friend Jerry Roberts, he said, ask him about his memoir. So maybe we start there. Are you, are you writing something? What's, what's going on?
Well, I am and I have been. It's been a, quite, quite the journey. I've, I started really just as soon as I finished up at the city, I began the, the stream of consciousness download. And then that went on for a couple of years. And then I handed that pile over to my junior high classmate, whom you know, Hillary Dole Klein. And she's been my editor for now, for now, a couple of years, helping me flesh out and make sense of it. And we are now, I can even show you, we've got two of these nice fat volumes.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Of, of better than raw material, third draft material. And now, of course, they, we have to start winnowing and, and so forth. But yeah, no, I'm excited about it. My family came here in the late 19th century and my father's family did. And so I, I, and they were, they were quite the batch of, of, of both characters and, and people who, who had really fine careers. So I, I share some of that background and, and then of course, get into my own life as well.
Obviously I cover elected officials and for the most part, they're just elected officials. They're there today, gone tomorrow. If you've been around a long time like me, you sometimes get to know them professionally, right? You know, watching them and having conversations. I was very touched by your last day on the council, when you sort of said goodbye and farewell. And it showed, wow, you, you love this, this is your life and you gave a lot, everything to it. And so I imagine the book is going to capture all of that. What's, what's the story you're trying to tell Bendy? Like, what do you want people to know about Bendy White and your, your contributions to this world and this community?
Well, I would say I, I would be much more about Santa Barbara than Bendy White. What we all know is that we are the luckiest people in the world. We, this particularly in, gosh, the last, if the last three months haven't, haven't proven that with just people, the heat waves everywhere and, well, gosh, it's going to hit, it got over 80 today, you know? And it's just, obviously Santa Barbara is, is just an amazing refuge from a world that's, that's really in a tough place. So that I would say is one of the real, real cores of, of what I'm trying to write is the, the people, the, the way that this place was honored, even starting with creating the national forests that, that gave us that refuge. And then just layer upon layer of, of, of people who, who each had their vision of what Santa Barbara should be about and made a real effort to, to make that happen. And it's, it with, obviously with, with wonderful, with maybe, would it be too much success? When, when the growth control being an issue that worldwide is, it's, it's one of the things that's killing us is just having a population that's, that's way more than, than feels sustainable. And folks of, of every stripe wanting to get away from, from their worst place to come to a better place. And there's just, the pressures are obviously very high. And who, who ends up in Santa Barbara? But those that can't afford it. And it wasn't always the case, Josh. And even in when you as a young man, I as a, certainly as a child, for example, there were people of every economic level who could live here and, and even own a place here. It just, it was a, obviously a, a different time that way. So Santa Barbara is, is at the core of what I want to talk about. And I just feel like I got a chance to exercise, maybe that's the wrong word, but to, to realize some of my potential in terms of helping out, running the place, which I, if I'd been in, in other places, I wouldn't have had that chance. So I feel really lucky to have, to be able to be part of the teams that have, that have worked on Santa Barbara. And then of course, there's all the fun stuff too. Just one thing that is, is definitely in, in my book is the enormous role that tennis played in the White family. Is that my father was, was the tennis pro at the Montecito Country Club back in the day. And just that that was something that spread out in the family. And it's kind of a, to me, it was a, it was an important part of my early life too.
So are you on team pickleball or team tennis?
You know, I.
Ballers are taking over.
That's, that's true. And hey, it's, it's where, it's what people can, that's all they can do, then that's, that's wonderful. Unfortunately, I, I hurt my back injury, shut that avenue off for me. So I get to watch and I can still clap and boo. But no, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm an ardent fan, but I haven't been able to, to, to actually do in, in quite a long time.
Yeah, well, my son and I were watching Wimbledon and I think it's Carlos Alcaraz beat Novak Djokovic, you know, in the finals. And it's just amazing, the, the guy's 20 years old, right? He's 20 years old. You think about that, how young that is. And here he is, the number one tennis player in the world. It's such a fascinating sport and these, I mean, they're athletes, they could be football players. I mean, they're just, they're such great shape, you know?
They're, they're another species there, so fast. And yeah, it was, it was inspiring to watch.
Yeah, what are you doing when you're not, you know, writing your memoir here? How do people interact with you these days now that you've slowed down in your community service a bit?
Well, I, I did have to go back to work on my own account. And sort of, I had been in the land use planning business and had, had built some houses and, but it was a bit of a hodgepodge. And so I needed to go back and fix up and reconfigure my, my finances so that I, I can have a relaxed last chapter. And so that was, that took a good, a good, a good, long time. And for fun, fishing is, took the place of tennis. That definitely is, is something that I love to do. I just got back from Yellowstone. And, but I'll go on the, I go on the ocean as well. Go, I've been, had a very nice tuna fishing trip early, earlier in, in June. So that's, that's my fun. I have two grandkids still living here. And we're definitely active in, in their, in their lives. We, we get to help out. Sky is a contractor, our son is a contractor and has, has to be in four places all at once every day. So we get to, we get to pick up some of the slack in, in hauling. Now just one left without a driver's license. But anyway, that's been, and that's been really rewarding and fun to have, have them. And they, and then what we have been able to do is keep that family in town. We've been, that's been a, been lucky. And of course, we helped make our luck in that area. But we, we've been able to keep that, as much family as can stand us gets to stay here. That's been wonderful. And then I, and I, I have a dog that walks me twice a day. And I'm a water jogger. I'm in the water three or four times a week. I, that's more of my, and I go to the gym in between that. So I stay active.
Yeah, well, well, that's great. I'm, I'm glad that you're doing so well and I'm looking forward to this book one day and checking it out and seeing you at Chow Sooners and everywhere else, there's book signings. And I'm sure there'll be popular events. I want to give you the last word, Bendy. You spent a lot of time in your career, educating people, helping people, volunteering your knowledge. So maybe you could just give the final word here, just sort of a, a send off, you know, to anyone watching about, as we look out here, there are challenges and maybe it's just summary here, but housing, downtown, quality of life, neighborhood preservation, you know, you have the, you have the stage here. What do you want people to know? What's your, your words of wisdom here for people going forward who are in the hot seat trying to figure this out?
Well, first of all, I wish, I wish you, I wish you luck, decision makers. And, and, and I don't mean just luck, I mean, success. It, this is, these are not easy times and these are not easy issues. And I support you in, in just trying to unlock the, the treasure box that exists, that State Street is. I know that it's, 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 it's just around the corner and keep at it. And as far as everybody, there's, there's a, there's a thousand people in our region who helped make this place what it is. The, the great Bob Easton, who, who wrote a book or two on, he wrote one on, on the oil spill, for example. But one of, one of the old Santa Barbara wise men said, being a Santa Barbara, there's an Athenian quality to it. You're obligated to participate in local activities. I took it to, to perhaps a limit of local government and, and that's a whole area, which definitely, I, there are some 100, 125 commission spots at this, at the city alone, to say nothing of the county, the Goleta Carpinteria. So those are really useful things to, where you can help out. But then go beyond that. You go to Heal the Ocean, you go to Citizens Planning Association. Look around and whatever you're interested in, in terms of the arts, theater, get involved in those, help out and certainly open your wallet to them to the best you can. We are blessed with all of these resources here. And let's help keep them the wonderful resources that they are. We're the luckiest people in the whole world.
All right, eloquently said, perfectly said. Harwood Bendy White, thanks a lot for your time and look forward to seeing you around. Take care.
Thanks, thanks for the opportunity, Josh.
All right, thank you.